I just messed up my own.
So when did you get my email about from the county or not?
From what?
The county?
Yes.
Okay.
Sure did. We're all good with that.
And then this is what you said you go look at for.
Yep.
Okay, so when I went there, for some reason it wouldn't print this and that on the same page.
Yep.
Um, and there's no green.
Okay.
Outlined areas therefore there's no logical areas. And then the D E C, I called wait, I called after the last meeting and they said, well, I gotta, I don't know who to help you, can help you. I'll probably have to use somebody else. So four or five people later, they had no idea.
Took care of it.
Said again today.
I took care of it.
So you took care.
I called them today and they sent me all the paperwork that shows.
So they sent me to the Army Corps of Engineers in Buffalo, who I called, and they said that it's a Class C.
Stream.
Stream with no name that's attributable to Spring Brook that then goes to the Genesee River and, and then the guy was gonna call me back, but he never did. So, and then I called Army Corps of Engineers.
This fills it really nicely.
There's the property.
It's all the archaeological, that's what those does are. This is the non-exclusion, so you can't, they can't say that doesn't count. It does count. Which means it has to go a hundred feet off that. Or get a permit.
Or get, I was gonna ask you, is that not.
They sent me the permit as well. Yeah, they sent me the permit as well, so it depends on that. But that's.
So it says how it's too close to the water?
Well, I'm, I wish I could see a scale bar on here. I don't see a scale bar.
Oh, I should look at my glasses. Good idea.
The problem is this doesn't show the stream, so wherever the stream is, you delineate it off that, which is that, and then you do another hundred feet off that. And I think that shows.
And then this is the, before I didn't send you the sample.
Oh. If this had longer. The problem is this, there's this one here. And there's another image here that shows it, if you can see this is a river.
Right.
So the question is, are we counting this? Is that be delineated? And then the delineation, a hundred feet off, and if he's not in there.
It's only, that's only a hundred and ninety-one feet wide.
I know.
So.
It's highly possible, but I'm just saying, he could get delineated and find out he's safe, and that's good. But if he delineates it, he's in the hundred foot. I have the wetland permit that they sent me, they said, kind of fill it out. So I think it can be conditional, that and this wet as well, she's like on the verbiage that says, this doesn't matter if you do a little chunk here, a little chunk here. They're all gonna pull the same thing, it depends. So.
Thank you for talking.
No problem.
Just delaying a couple minutes because our one and only applicant is not present. Uh, anybody, I don't know if anybody from public is here for the Kedopia site plan review. That's not going to happen tonight. The applicant withdrew for tonight.
Where is that? Is that on Gail Road, the corner there?
That's the old GCC building out there.
It's the GCC building.
We're here for part of that and then the Airbnb thing.
That's what we're waiting on. So we're, there were two site plan reviews for tonight.
Both of them we were here for.
Okay, the, yeah.
Well, it's, you have the time.
Yep.
Do you think that we would do the next meeting, like, child care facility?
I can't confirm. The only thing the applicant said was he was not prepared. He did not have his materials prepared for.
My only thing to be for next month, he didn't say. He was gonna put down a good capacity down. He's like, maybe he has a particular background as a architect engineer. He doesn't, he's not changing anything. I don't know why he needs to know anything. He's not paying to make it a long way. He doesn't have a, he doesn't plan it.
He's done.
He got one.
Right, we don't have any more questions.
So does he commit to do anything on the inside?
No, probably not.
No?
No.
So just have them.
Right. Does it say what?
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I don't know what the application was.
So you have questions?
They don't seem to be running late or something. He knows it's tonight, oh my God.
What child, what we were just discussing.
Are you still coming to tonight's line work meeting? It started five minutes ago.
Um, what we were just discussing, we can actually, we can, we can go through the process. We have an application, we have updates on, you know, outstanding things that we didn't cover before. He might not even have to show up.
I just remember your words, I'm gonna have to catch somewhere in town. Okay, now I forgot the words. It was, you said, it's gotta be, I can't, I can't want this more than the person that, what, say the words, what are the words?
I can't want this more than you.
Right, you know, and if they don't show, he was here, he was here waiting for a guy to show up, and the guy never showed up.
Okay, let's go ahead and get started with sit, pledge allegiance. A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under our God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you all so much. Excellent attendance. Ward, thank you public for coming to the meeting tonight. Um, we'll get started with approval of the August twentieth, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes. If everybody had a chance to review them, do we have any corrections suggested, any amendments of any kind?
I have a question. Three amendments.
Okay.
Uh, first page, it says, this area will be burned and additional trees will be planted. Is that the right word? Is that what he said?
I think it should be burned.
I thought he said burned.
Yeah.
Correct.
It was burned.
Yeah, okay. I was like, I don't remember that part of the discussion. And then the additions, I guess, amendments. But there's not any record of, uh, me talking to Charlie and saying, can you please check on the D E C archaeological, uh, wetland and SWIP items? So I just wanna make sure it's in there so that, so there's three items that should have been reviewed since the last meeting. Otherwise, looks good to me.
What did you say?
Archaeology.
Archaeology, archaeology.
Archaeology, D E C, and none of the D E C. It would say wetland and SWIP.
Yep. Very good. Anybody else? Okay, I'll entertain motion to accept minutes as amended.
Make the motion, accept the minutes as amended.
Motion's heard. Seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm just gonna say that I want to hear it, so.
Very good. Okay, that passes. Minutes are accepted. So, like I said at the beginning, uh, there will not be item number five on tonight's agenda, site plan review for childcare facility at seven two eight five Gail Road will not be happening tonight. That leaves us at number four, the public hearing, site plan review for the cottages and, and this is actually one of the first points of clarification I wanna make as we run through this application. It should not say storage anywhere. I believe the official use, we agreed was changed to camper and RV sales, which is an approved use in the code. So, I just wanna make sure, I'm gonna make a note that the official, um, application, the site plan application, we have to make sure that whatever the, you know, our clean official form, that that use is amended. Because the applicant did change, he said he was going to be changing that for this meeting.
Did he submit new application since the last meeting, stating everything he said?
I would be okay to simple amendment of that. I don't think we need a whole new, we can change that. It's just one line in there.
Yeah, I just didn't know if he had adjusted anything, 'cause there was other discussion, I thought about things.
Oh, yeah, there, I'm gonna go over multiple things, so, yeah.
So phase one development, country crossroads, kind of using storage and trailer sales, is that what he's got to, he's got to change to do?
Does it say and trailer sales?
No, we didn't put that in, no.
Oh.
That's what, we, you say that, is what I'm saying.
Right, and I.
Take off the storage.
Yeah, storage has to come off of there. And is that? Is that, is, in what you just read, is that asking, what, what question is that answering?
That's the zoning referral point. That's the zoning, that's the zoning referral point. This is what Sharon filled out to send to them. So, we need to change it on the site plan, site plan approval.
Right.
Motor court and something storage.
Yep, storage is.
Outside storage. Go ahead.
Storage is going to be an accessory use, so it shouldn't be listed as primary use.
And so, motor court and trailer sales.
Okay, I'm going to start knocking off a few of those big items that we needed resolution on as we walked away last time. Uh, one was in the, in the EAF form, uh, and we're gonna go through the full EAF, just so that we make sure, T's are crossed, I are dotted, well, and even on the EAF. Uh, but one of those items was, um, the mapper flagged for me that it's an area of archaeological significance that had to be looked into. Um, we actually referred to Chris system, um, New York State Chippewa, and, uh, there is no issue on this particular site. Just missed it. Um, so there is no issue with the archaeological. We don't, we had spoken at last meeting about possibly having to have a survey done, possible research to find out at some point, was there a survey done? That's not needed, so, um, we should be satisfied on that one. Um, if you don't mind, Andy, I'll let you speak on the architecture of the, um, wetlands.
D E C, yeah. Uh, so, spoke to the D E C after looking at their online mapper, and they sent me a new image just today, so that's why I can't share, I can turn it around for everybody. On the board. As you can see, the property in question is here. Um, this is a riverine, uh, wetland by the D E C. And this area in here is basically saying that it's an area that can't be excluded. It has to be considered, uh, for wetlands. So what happens then is, this has to be delineated because it's just a blob, right? So what does that mean? Well, it's not shown on, on our drawing that everybody has here. There's no stream shown on here. So that needs to be delineated in order to make sure that his work is all a hundred feet from the edge of that delineation. So basically, if I, if I say the delineation is here in his flag, there's another hundred foot buffer off of that. It's not supposed to be working. It's not that it can't be, but then he needs to get a permit from the D E C to have done work in that section. So, obviously, doing the work before this recon could be a problem, but it might not be. So, um, at this point, the D E C is, has sent me the, the, uh, permit, um, for him to do, to fill out. But I would say we should recommend that he gets it delineated first, then does the setback to see if he needs to get the permit. So, because if he's, if he's breaking that rule, there's gonna be, there'll be bigger issues and we should not be approving. So, um, all that to say, I hope it's not a problem, but we don't, nobody knows from blob on a screen, so.
Didn't, when he get the setback and then what will there?
And then if he, if he has any work that has been done in that hundred foot buffer, then he needs to get the permit from the D E C.
Andy, how, where's the delineation? Is there actually?
They, you have to send somebody out there, and a, and a marine meteorologist will walk out with little flagging and mark it.
Okay, so it's not, it's not on the map right now?
No, no. I mean, the maps are just, they look from aerial view, right? And they see that there's a stream there, and they say, oh, that counts, kinda thing, so. Is the, uh, is that based off of contour lines though, where it comes off in the stream, because? It should be. What I'm looking at here, there is a contour line. You can see the contours, yeah. Following that pretty closely. Right, yep. And, uh, he's, well, it would be. Yeah. So, but, wouldn't wanna make that judgment just based on what we have, so, he's, he should have a professional company doing it. Um, is that good for the wetland part? Any questions on that? Um, and, and why does this matter if people are like, what's the big deal? It's already a flooded area, so you're doing more work in a flooded area, so you're adding impervious area to a problem area already. So that's why you wanna have the D E C say, well, are you really taking care of this properly so it doesn't make it a worse situation, right? So that's the only reason it matters, so, in this case, 'cause it's small, but.
Can you have a septic system and leach field in such a thing?
No.
'Cause I see the septic pump station over there on the left side.
Yep. Again, I, I, there's not a, uh, scale, uh, scale bar on this thing.
Yeah.
So, I can't tell for sure, but.
Does the site plan not have to have a leach field on it?
Uh, it should be, yeah, there's.
There's a leach field right here.
To the upper part.
That's where it is?
Yeah, so he should be a hundred feet, and that looks like it probably say, but. Again, it's, um, it's just one of those, when you see that flagging that, you know, that's on the screen, looks like you might be in the area, that's the next step is to delineate it to make sure you don't have a problem, so. Do you wanna do the part?
Does D E C do the delineation or they hire someone?
Tony would have to hire somebody to do it.
What was that?
Um, the SWIP part.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so then the other question was on the SWIP.
Can you tell me what that stands for?
Stormwater pollution prevention plan, which basically, again, if you're causing, if you're creating more impervious area, you have to treat that water and capture that water before it leaves the property. Um, and the D E C oversees that as well. And if you, normally the rule thumb is if you are disturbing an acre or more, you need a permit. Um, however, Tony's showing, his first piece of work here is way under an acre, but all these other pieces, the, the driveway, the parking, all those things, would put him over the limit. And I will read the verbiage for everybody. Give me one second. So, do you need a SWIP if you're disturbing less than one acre now and then a little bit more later, but in total it'll go over an acre? Yes, and here is why, the project disturbs more than acre, eventually the project is part of a larger common plan of development or sale that will ultimately disturb more than acre, even if each phase disturbs less than one acre individually. Uh, it's called the common plan of development, basically, and so, in this case, it would need to have a SWIP. Because it's going to disturb more than acre eventually. Again, just a permit with the D E C, but gotta have it. Um, they will permit it and then they'll, they'll make sure they're happy with how the water's being treated and captured and treated. Doing good? Questions?
Okay. So at this point, before we go any further, uh, Tony, I.
I apologize for being late. I taught Tuesdays and Thursdays and last week it got canceled. I'm like, oh my dear God, I mean.
I can barely keep up myself.
It's not, I mean, it's absolutely crazy.
So, we went in and got started just because we have items that we need to clean up from last time?
Yep.
For your benefit, very quickly, I'd like to go through just what we've done so far.
Sure, thank you.
So, um, the first thing we did was say, in the applicant, last meeting, you said you were gonna change the use to, um, camp, uh, the cottages and the camper, the camper and RV sales.
Right.
We wanna strike storage from primary use on all applications. So Charlie's gonna look at that, have you sign. I don't think we need to redo them, but we wanna clean that paperwork up to make sure there's no people.
So you're saying you wanna get that word off of there, if I'm understanding that correctly?
Correct.
Okay.
Right, right. Um. Number two. We had brought up that, um, there was potentially, that it was in an area of archaeological sensitivity, that there might have to be a survey done, or we might have to do some research and find out what was done previously. We checked, um, with New York State Chippewa, the Chris system, there is no archaeological issue on that parcel.
Okay, good.
So that is a clear wipe. There's nothing for me to do there.
Great, thank you.
Not so lucky on the D E C with the wetland side. This is a riverine system.
Okay.
Um, and, I'm sorry, I asked you again to do a brief, no, the, the brief, the brief version for him.
The brief version. Tony, you wanna come up? I can show you how my scoring is, situation.
I didn't talk to them over there.
Yeah, this is what they sent me today though.
Okay.
Um, so this is your property.
Changed their mind, yeah.
Yeah, and this whole area here is not allowed to be excluded, which means they believe this is all wetland. Now, what you have to do is, it's, if, let's say this was the edge right here. If it is in fact their wetland, you have to be a hundred feet off of that.
Ninety-four on one and a hundred and four on the other.
Okay, well, here's the, here's what you gotta do though, in order to get them to be happy, you have two things to do. You gotta have somebody delineate that wetland edge. Okay, then from there, do the hundred foot buffer. Put it on this map.
Yep, Rob should have put it on there, 'cause we, we measured from this line.
Yeah, that says pretty line.
Well, the, the, the actual wetland, but Rob's got the other, the other mess, ninety-four feet on the short end and a hundred and four up on this, that's pretty good, right, from what we had.
Okay, we'll just have, you'll have somebody delineate it and make sure it's on this drawing.
Yeah.
And then do a hundred foot offset. If any of your work here is in that hundred foot, then you just need to go get a permit from the D E C to have, have done that. Maybe you'll be okay, and then you're not, right?
I think we will. I mean, it's the septic, I know we said that, even Charlie, because these guys from the county were down, and they were fully aware of, uh, that delineation, delineation, so. But, all right, I.
So that's, that's what you guys, so hopefully the first step clears you. If it doesn't, go get the permit. That's what you get.
It's not the end of the world, I guess.
No, and, and what, and what I think we can work towards is a conditional approval. Because we can do that. I said last week, we can approve so that you can keep moving.
Yeah, that's good, because I got stuff.
Understood.
I was wanting to come and told them things this week, and I'm like, absolutely not.
I just want you to be aware of that, so you don't feel like, if you're hearing this, it means you're not gonna walk out of here tonight with some kind of action on the board's part.
Yeah, okay, that's good. I'll go take a seat and try to answer.
Oh, and then SWIP, why, it, it's not gonna be out here necessarily, but, so here's how it works. Remember we talked last time about, uh, and you probably heard it as you were walking in. So, even though this isn't an acre, the way that it's, the rule is written is not, it's called, um, what I just tell everybody, the phrase is.
Common plan development.
Thank you. It's right here. So common plan development basically says, by, by D E C's laws, if you have property that where you plan to, eventually, it's gonna go over an acre. You still gotta do it.
They wanna do it.
They're gonna get it, so, okay? So just take care of that too, and you'll be, that's all for the D E C though, that you just have to worry about.
Yeah, all right.
Okay.
We did, I'm not sure you got other questions, but I'll, I'll sit down and try and answer anything. We did, we did end up having to add some lighting for insurance reasons. Let's see you guys now, but, it's solid.
Okay. Did anybody from last meeting recall any other two do's, and Charlie, and I, I'll include you on this too as well, were there any other outstanding items that we had to research, refer? Those were the two big ones for me. Okay. We can go through the EAF.
Yep, copy of that right there, or just from last time we're supposed to bring it?
I didn't bring it.
I, I, I think there's a push.
Look over your shoulder.
There's a push to paper list, which is, print on your own printer. Okay, does, uh, number one, does the proposed action only involve the legislative adoption of a plan, local law ordinance, administrative rule, or regulation? That's a no. Two, does the proposed action require a permit, approval, or funding from any other governmental agency? If yes, list agency and permit or approval.
We know D E C SWIP.
Yep.
The other one we're not sure, so.
Yep, so this is gonna be a change to a yes. Because again, we're working toward a conditional, we're trying to work toward a conditional approval. Uh, total acreage is all in there in the original application. Check, uh, number four, check all land uses that occur on or adjoining near the proposed action. We have agriculture listed, commercial listed, residential listed. Does the wetland apply for the quarter?
No.
No. Okay, number four is good. Number five is the proposed action, A, a permitted use under the zoning regulations, yes. B, consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan, yes. We even discussed the corridor plan, um, and, you know, what that means as far as that was provided to Mr. Todrick to take a look at that. Number six, is the proposed action consistent with the predominant character of the existing built or natural landscape? Um, the answer was yes. Um. Mr. Todrick gave us a description of the type of buildings. I have to leave from the description, you know, rural character, country scene to fit in with the corridor plans that, um, we discussed last week. Anybody have any thoughts or problems with that? Okay. Number seven, is the site of the proposed action located in or does it adjoin a state listed critical environmental area? No. Eight, A, will the proposed action result in a substantial increase in traffic above present levels? No. B, are public transportation services available at or near the site of the proposed action? No. C, are any pedestrian accommodations or bicycle routes available on or near the site of the proposed action? No, and again, if anybody has any contention with anything that I say as an answer, please speak up. No, and again, if anybody has any contention with anything that I say as an answer, please speak up. Nine, does the proposed action need or exceed the state energy code requirements? Uh, no, that's a meet. Ten, uh, will the proposed action connect to an existing public-private water supply? That's a yes to the water. Eleven, will the proposed action connect to existing wastewater utilities? That's a no, because there is a septic system on the site plan. Number twelve, I have this highlighted because this was the, does the site contain a structure that is listed on either the state or national register, register of historic places? That answer's a no, but B, is the proposed action located in an archeologically sensitive area? That was blank previously. We're going to change that to a no in the official application. Thirteen, A, does any portion of the site of the proposed action or lands adjoining the proposed action contain wetlands or other water bodies regulated by federal, state, or local agency? That was previously answered no. That's going to be changed to a yes. B, would the proposed action physically alter or encroach into any existing wetland or water body? Would yes identify the wetland or water body to the extent of alterations? That was previously answered no. That will be.
I think it's still no.
Still no, okay.
Yeah, cause it's not gonna be in the wetland, it would be in the buffer.
In the buffer, okay, that will remain a no. Fourteen, identify the typical habitat types that occur on or likely to be found on the project site. Our options are shoreline forest, agricultural grassland, early mid succession, or wetland, urban or suburban. We have agricultural grassland selected. Number fifteen, does the site of the proposed action contain any species of animal or associated habitats listed by the state or federal government is threatened or endangered? No. Number sixteen, is the project site located in the one hundred year floodplain? No. Seventeen, will the proposed action create stormwater discharge either from point or non-point sources? If yes, A, will stormwater discharge just flow to the adjacent properties? Uh, that answer, the original answer was no.
Yeah, how does that work if, uh, if we're really only talking about this part of the design right now?
Right.
That's, that's different, right? It will create something, so. If yes, well, so, it won't flow to adjacent property.
Would his permit give him guidance that even if this is a yes, there will be a plan for?
Oh, yeah, he'll, he'll have to do that, yeah.
All right, so.
It'll, it will go to conveyance systems, yeah, it's fine.
Right.
Yeah, I think this first one was probably, probably yes then, yeah, technically.
Right.
So seventeen A is yes, is what you're saying?
Seven, seventeen, yes.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, the big, the big one is yes. Okay, so what we're doing is we're basically acknowledging that there, will the proposed action create stormwater discharge either from the point or non-point sources? If yes, that's a disqualifier in any way.
Right.
And if you get a permit, it doesn't change it. They'll give you a, a plan and say, this is how.
Yeah, I mean, we're shading water toward the creek. It isn't like we have any, any pipes or anything that they're gonna be discharging.
Number eighteen, does the proposed action include construction or other activities that result in the impoundment of water or liquids? E G, retention pond, waste living dam? No. Nineteen, has the site of the proposed action on adjoining property been the location of an active or closed solid waste management facility? No. Number twenty, has the site of the proposed action or an adjoining property been the subject of remediation on when they're completed for hazardous waste? No. Just sort of checking boxes here. All neighbors were notified as required. Taking a look at the site fence and mental checklist. Uh, we previously answered all these. I'm just looking for gaps. Number four I have left blank, indicate significant, um, yes. Significant in excess of six inch trunk diameter existing trees. Um, we requested that be added. Those are, are those.
They're in the.
What was that you're adding, Wayne, I'm sorry?
The, the existing trees.
Uh-huh.
Were, were supposed to be added.
Okay.
They are in, well, that's landscape.
Yeah, it's hard to know with the, is it existing or proposed? These are all proposed, that wouldn't matter, the existing ones out there.
Is that saying six inch diameter or is that true?
Might not be much other than what's.
Or is it the trees along the creek there?
Read it one more time.
Yeah, that's all that's there is basically the trees that are along the creek line.
Yeah. Yeah, they have the, the tree line is on here, so that would be indicated, but is this, is it?
This is, this is basically what the shingle existing trees, just to make sure it's not.
We know, that agriculture, right?
Yeah, we haven't taken any of that out of there. We've cleaned up the scrub in between and stuff, you know? It's far down past where the buildings are so far.
And this also covers watercourses, protected wetlands, so we have the protected wetlands around the drawing. Water, watercourses is.
Well, thank you, it's gonna be added.
Existing contours, we have contours.
Those are on the table?
Yeah.
So those aren't on there yet?
Um.
What is? Contours are, but the watercourses are not.
Contours.
There's, but there's no, that's, that's an easement you're looking at, utility wires. That's what he's gotta do, he's gotta have that remediation done.
Yeah.
The D E C actually, and I talked to that gentleman over there, is actually listed that as being able to take a kayak down through there. I would love to, love to sit back and watch him try and do that without a chainsaw or a machete or a backhoe, because it's not gonna happen. And it's completely dry right now.
But, but before, before you came in, we actually, when we went through the detail on that, the problem is, it's a riverine system that feeds to a tributary that goes right in, eventually right to the.
Right.
Uh, right to the Jacy River, so.
Well, when everything boils over, it swells, you know, that's, that's a.
Yeah, so, uh, can put that in as a, in the holding spot for a condition that the drawing needs to be updated. Once the, once the.
Yep.
Once the remediation's done.
Yeah, and if that clearly states any trees over six inches, then anything that's on the property, it needs to be there, otherwise it's not net.
Yep.
So he's to tell his surveyor that?
Yeah. And there shouldn't be too much on there, but.
Okay, number five, indicating any portion, portions for the floodplain, that's a A. Adjusted all of these. I remember this being pretty good. Uh, number fifteen, I have no checkbox plan, or may require detailed traffic study? We said last time that we were waiting there. Uh, number eighteen, see, E A F, which we just did. So that should be complete, um, submit. I did a statement that was complete, okay, that comes in the checklist. I probably should have done this before I opened the, uh.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
I'll entertain a motion to, uh, open the public hearing, so that that shows.
Tony, do you know where you're putting the sign number sixteen says here, so existing or sign location or?
Well, sign will be right exactly where the temporary sign is now. I, I don't have measurements. It's about twelve foot to the left of the driveway. That's where that's gonna be going.
Cause it says two by four sign per town code regulations, I just. Okay, there's plenty of truth, but that's where the sign is, okay?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, we have a second. We have a motion on the table to open the public hearing. All of you say aye?
Aye, aye, aye.
So move. Sorry? Yes, indeed.
Now, since hereby given that the Town Village of Lima Joint Plan Board will hold a public hearing and special meeting on September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five at seven oh five P M at the Lima Town Hall, seventy-three twenty-nine East Main Street, Lima, New York, to consider a site plan to destruct storage units and cottages. On the property located at seventy-one eighty-nine Gale Road, tax gap number twenty-seven point three dash twelve dash one point three three in the town of Lima. The application and all supporting material will be available for review at the Town Hall and the Towns Lima website at W W dot Lima slash New York dot org. This is dated August twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five, published on September eleventh, twenty-twenty-five by Sharon Knight, Secretary to the Town Village Joint Planning Board.
Thank you. Charlie just mentioned signs. Do we have a sign plan? I know there was a discussion of signs. Do we have?
Any details yet?
Yeah, they're gonna be, we got the dimensions written down, but, uh, I mean, nothing, it's gonna be nothing extra. I think it's not gonna be lit up or anything like that, so.
Can you get your sign people to email me what the.
I can.
Signs gonna look like for your permit?
Absolutely, I can do that, yep.
I'm going to add that as a conditional for seeking the sign permit.
I think we listed the size, correct Charlie?
Yeah, two foot by four foot. Yeah, last meeting, I wrote and wrote down here the sixteen that he's gonna get the, the new sign permit for the sign. I guess he just didn't get the sign mocked up on the sheet of paper yet.
Yep, we can do that. I use sign blazers all the way in Lake Valley, seems to do a pretty nice job.
Okay, before I open it for the public comment, does anybody have any other items? I just remembered the sign thing after I thought I heard that. Anything else anybody need to cover? No, I'd like to open up the floor. Any public comments, questions?
Um, I'm looking at the environmental resource mapper for the wetlands. Is that what you're looking at?
I'm looking at the, uh, image that was sent to me from the D E C.
So are you looking at the informational freshwater wetland, or are you looking at the federal wetland?
Uh, I'm looking at the D E C's freshwater wetland.
Cause according to the environmental mapper, there's no, there's no, there's no freshwater wetland, D E C.
Mark, this is directly from the D E C today. What do you want me to tell you? That mapper's basically on the D E C. They said, we're running the G I S and getting you the official.
So this isn't valid in?
That's not official.
Those, those, those are junk now.
That's the one I was going off of originally.
So is, is he getting a, a D E C delineation, or is he getting an Army Corps delineation, or is he getting?
He needs a wetland delineation, doesn't matter. It's what, it's the offset that happens based on.
So the D E Cs and the federal are the same? Because of the riverine, the riverine here is defined under the federal definitions.
Right.
Not the state definition.
So, okay, so they are calling it a freshwater wetland based on the D E C, ineligible for an exclusion. So it doesn't matter whose it is, the D E C is taking control of it, is what they're saying. So we gotta follow their rule.
I just wanna make sure that when Tony leaves, he's getting the right thing.
Yeah.
That's all.
Yeah.
And then the other question I have is, um, I'm looking at the Chris website. And it says that the entire property from Gale Road to Rochester to Dalton to wherever the next road is to the north, that's all within an archeological buffer zone.
Right, that's what all these dots are on here.
So this whole, this whole blue area, so you're saying that that means there's no archeological issue in it?
No, according to the report. Explain that part.
Well, this is, this was pulled by Charlie.
Somebody previously did it. Yeah, somebody already did it.
That parcel, at the parcel level, this, it was a parcel report. That's why we flagged it, Mark. We flagged it in the first meeting.
Because that.
Because of what you're seeing.
Okay.
We flagged it, we said we needed to follow up, and then pulled the Chris report on that parcel. So apparently, somewhere along the line, somebody did do one.
Pretty sure when Claire had it.
Then something satisfied that said that's.
I think he got, he got stopped up here originally because of it until it was taken care of.
And then that was our, that's why we said, let's go research it and find out.
Well, I'm glad that that was there.
All right.
It's easier to do that today than it was back when he did it. It was much more of a deal, you know?
Yeah. Okay, I think we're at a point where we can talk about.
Nobody else is in?
But, I think so. I asked a few times, does anybody have any other items? Anything you see in the site plan, anything we asked for that you don't see in the amended site plan? I have a few things that we, that have to be amended for conditional approval, if we go that route. Good? So, um, I think the best way forward is I would look for a recommendation for a conditional approval. Um, so entertain motions and we'll put that out for a motion. Um, I might as well go through, let's just discuss what conditions first. I have them, uh, first condition, change the use to camper and R D sales, which uses the, the word straight out of the code. Um, per what Mr. Tondrick said, his intentions were at last meeting, put that in the record on all applications. Um, so all of those should be changed, so whatever Charlie finds changes. You guys work out if you need to sign it or fill out a new form, whatever you're comfortable with.
Yeah, we can do it.
Let's take care of that. So that's the first condition. Second condition, recommend delineation and seek, um, any required permits, if required, from the D E C for the wetlands.
Yeah.
Number three, I'm sorry, Matt, tell me if you need. Okay?
Yep.
All right, number three, um, should septic system stay in there, you think? Because of the wetlands? I have to do that, just to make sure that the septic system's in compliance with.
Well, it is, because the county, the county people were there themselves and.
Then you have nothing, if it is.
They went over there and.
It's a condition you've already met it, so.
Right, exactly. And Charlie's got the valid permit for the septic, so I have the final approval on the septic plan, so. And I know them huts lined up with the septic system, so.
Yeah, there, anything that's in the, but it'll be part of the permit, just like, let's say it's in there. So he's gonna have to say what he's doing in there.
So, okay, I need, I just didn't know if it needed to be a separate number.
And, and, cause there's several things. It's like, clearing trees, it's excavation, there's a lot of things that they wanna know about.
It'll all be covered.
Right, if it's needed.
Yep, if it's needed.
That's what I keep, but we don't know.
Number three, I have the SWIP, the stormwater, um, the com, would you call it common plan of development, right?
Yeah.
To meet all D E C requirements, so stormwater common then, uh, common plan of development to meet all D E C requirements.
Engineers should be able to do that.
Number four, add watercourse or wetlands to site plan, so to this drawing.
Yep.
Watercourse wetlands need to be added to this site plan once that delineation work is done.
Yeah, let me get with the, with the D E C, I guess, and see exactly what's what with that, and then we'll put on there whatever they.
Yep.
Dictate, I guess.
And add any trees, existing trees greater than six inch diameter to this.
Okay.
To this draw. That will go into the record as the approved site plan with all these conditions.
Okay. So the trees that are there, you, you don't wanna see just the tree line, you wanna see a drawing of each tree, is that, am I understanding that correct?
That's what our checklist.
Are you on a list?
That's what the checklist says, but I would be, I would be happy with if you have group, if you, isn't that like a, it's a big hedgerow, right?
It is, it's all loaded with willows, I mean.
I look to your expertise, but I would say if those were identified.
It's the, it's the edge, I, I'm not sure where, I'm not sure where that is.
I'm sure Rob's got it.
It's like if we have heritage trees here, then I understand you need to show every heritage tree or specimen. But I, if there's nothing in the open space, as long as you have the border, I don't see why that's, I mean, it's really probably all of us.
So we need to, need to define that tree line, be a little more specific about it, but, okay.
Normally you do that for like, in communities where you have things you need to protect a certain species or, you know, other like historic, you know, but.
Okay.
I'm not sure why our checklist says that, but, yes. So, yeah, anything that's out in the open though, that opens up.
Alright.
Is everybody agreeing?
Yeah, other than what I planned, there's nothing else.
Please don't show this, my decision.
Show the hedgerow, show any greater than six inch out in the open. Um, number five.
Andy, I think the town code used to say that you couldn't cut down a tree greater than six inches.
Is that where that came from?
I, I don't think that's in our code anymore though. So I, I haven't, I haven't looked at it a while.
Okay, that might, maybe that's where it started then.
Okay.
Was that, you're in trouble? I think we, can we, yeah, after this is all over, we should, we can floor that, because.
Okay. Alright, number five, um, is to go through the site permit application process and get all approvals required, pay the fee, get the site, cause there's a site permit, that's the idea. Okay, so I would entertain a motion, um, or I would suggest that we entertain a motion that, uh, to offer a conditional approval with the five conditions that I just outlined for the site plan to go forward. Anybody wanna make a motion? Anybody have any different ideas?
No, I'll make a motion that we approve the site plan pending those, uh, five conditions are met. That was stated previously.
Second. Seconded, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Mr. Tandrick, you've been granted a conditional approval of your site plan as your application. All five of those have to be met.
Yeah.
You know, we're basically extending to you saying, in good faith, you do these, you do these things and.
We'll take care of it.
So do you need any help with the D E C part, like numbers and wetland delineators, I can help with that.
Yeah, I'm pretty good with them guys down there, I dealt with them on a lot of cleanup stuff and they, they know me and I, like I said, I was already down there and.
You got it covered. Just if you needed it, just not.
I'll, I'll get down there with them and they're, they're not that bad to deal with.
No, they're pretty nice, actually.
Well.
This one.
This one. Alright, since number five was, uh, taken off the agenda for us. We've reached the end, uh, that was all of our U slash current business.
We're closing now.
Yep, uh, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion.
Motion made, second. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Show that the public hearing is closed. And I believe that concludes our business for the evening. Thank you very much, your attendance, and you're going. Motion to adjourn. Second, seconded.
Aye.
Let's be, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Stuff first means to remember now.